Welcome to the Williamsburg City Council Meeting of Monday, August the 11th. McKay, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Pons.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Here.
Okay, takes us to items for City Council Meeting of August 14th. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Under public hearings, we'll talk about an easement for Dominion Energy for the police station that's being constructed. Then, under unfinished business, we have the furniture contract for the new police station. Under new business, we have a proposal to increase parking fines. And then, under, still under new business, we have a purchase order for 132Y to do some surface treatment there, along with the construction on the Colonial Parkway. We have the consideration of purchasing two new fire apparatus. Then, we have a budget amendment to recognize some grant funds. We have the opportunity to refinance the fire trucks that we talked about earlier. And then, the last item, there's a budget amendment to recognize the grants. And then, we have the final item, which is to participate in a new opioid-related settlement agreement.
Any questions for the City Manager? See everybody there on 14th. Leads us now to public comments, which is an opportunity for anybody in the audience who would like to come forward and address council on whatever's on their mind. Oh, I do have some speakers' cards. I was going to hold that for the open forum, but Mr. Blaser, welcome. Welcome, how are you?
Fine. I'd like to start off with a little story some of y'all might know. Remember Napoleon, great general, field general? He called all of his generals in and had them explain the battle plan, okay? Then, he say, "Thank you, stand by." Then, he get the little guy standing out there, little guard guy, say, "Come on in here." And then, he'd explain the battle plan to the soldier. And if the soldier didn't understand, he'd say, "Thank you. Go stand out there in front of the tent." He'd call the generals back in. You guys got to come up with another plan. The problem is, that I'm concerned about, is this new parking thing. I had it explained to me, no bumper stickers, some fancy readers, God knows what they cost, some police cars, they run around. You have a dinner party, what do I do? Do I have to go and ask all my guests to have their bumper, their license numbers? How long do they last? Cuckoo birds. This is nuts. We have a system, somebody didn't order those bumper stickers, is what really happened, okay? And we got a system that works fairly well. I've got some rental properties, people have bumper stickers, nobody has any problem. I have a dinner party, I have a couple guest passes. I call the police and say, "I got three or four people coming this evening." They did, "Thank you very much." They must put it on a little cheat sheet, so when the policeman drives by at eight o'clock at night, he doesn't give my guests tickets. It works pretty doggone good, I think. Now, you want to come up with some 21st century app? I don't even know what an app is. You know, I don't do apps. So, plus, it seems like this whole thing was sprung on the public. What are you keeping secrets for? You got such a good plan, let everybody know about it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaser. Next speaker's card I have is Amy Quirk.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pons and City Councilors. I'm here to speak about the library, a little bit ahead of what I'm sure will be a great presentation from our library staff. But I wanted to just start by thinking about what a library is. And I want to suggest, a library is a really great window into our community's values. Now, I say that because when I go into our library, I find it to be the most diverse place that I regularly enter. I encounter people that are from vastly different socioeconomic backgrounds than I am, from different racial and cultural backgrounds, people that are older than me, people that are younger than me, people that speak different languages than I do. And I see, in my many years of regularly going to the library, you know, usually on a weekly basis, that this is a place where all of those people in our community, where a huge swath of our community can come, they feel like they belong, they are welcomed, and they find critical services that support them in whatever their journey is, whether it is getting help with their taxes, or learning new skills, learning how to use Excel, whether it is finding connections in a book club, whether it is literacy from the earliest ages to our elderly community. Everyone finds a place in the library and finds services that they value. And I am really proud of our community for that, that that's what we value, that we are enacting those values in our library. And I'm especially proud of our library staff that enact that relentlessly every day. I think now is the time that we need to meet the library staff and support them in that vision. And I think that that means, at this point, investing in a new library. I personally, in my regular use of the library, are seeing firsthand, running into firsthand the limits of the current structure. We, it's well-established that our patronage far exceeds the facility that we have. And I want to give you a couple examples, just from my own life, where I'm seeing that. I am part of an organization that regularly holds events at the library that brings in a lot of the public for cultural and educational programming. We hold those events in the library theater, which is not ADA compliant. This has become a major issue for us, to the point that we may not be able to continue using the library. We have people, I have people calling me personally, saying, "I want to come to those programs. The library is not a facility that I can access, given my disabilities." So, I'm really seeing people in our elderly population, people with different abilities, being shut out from some of that programming, which I'm sure goes far beyond just the programs I'm involved in. Need we talk about the upstairs nonfiction area? I remember being, having young children and wanting to go up there to get some tourism books that are up on that second floor. And I just had to be like, "You know what? I'm not going to get those books, because there's no way the stroller fits into this elevator." And I'm sure that people that have more mobility challenges than me, that is only amplified for them. I'm also seeing some limitations as my kids get older. We're entering into the tween and teen age group, and these are, our library downtown does not have the space to create a dedicated area for that group, that group that we start to see drop-offs in literacy, drop-off in engagement in reading and in the library. And we, there's just no space to really accommodate them and draw them in, despite amazing efforts by the library staff to nonetheless do so. The kinds of renovations that would be required of the current library structure to really make it usable for the growing needs and for the amazing and creative vision of our library staff are so extensive that I think we think very seriously about whether or not that would be less costly than building a new library, A. And even if it is, will we be pleased with the outcome? Or will we be stuck with, you know, some old, non-functional features with some, you know, added-on bells and whistles? So, we want to invest in our future. When we think about the library as a window into our values, I think what we see is, we are a community that knows that our economic development, our prosperity, our shared wealth comes from institutions like the library that invest in everybody and brings everybody up with us. So, please, I urge you to invest in our library. Thank you.
Next speaker's card I have is the Honorable Robert Braxton, face bear himself.
Slowly, but we'll get it.
Welcome, sir.
You'll look rather good from this end. Good afternoon, Mayor Pons, Vice Mayor Dent, Council Members Ramsey, Kernscheer, and Williams. I've lived in Williamsburg for many years of my life, long enough to remember when the current Williamsburg Library was a brand-new addition to our community. I was in my mid-30s when it opened, and I can tell you that even then, it was more than just a building with books. It was a symbol of hope, growth, and shared investment in future. The Williamsburg Library first opened its doors in the public in 1973. Since then, it's undergone expansions in 1982 and 1998 to accommodate growing community needs. Now, more than 50 years later, the world has changed dramatically. Our population has grown, technology has advanced, the needs of our regional community, young and old, have evolved. And while the library has done its best to keep up, the building itself simply cannot meet the needs of a 21st-century community. The space is too limited, the infrastructure is outdated, and the building design doesn't allow for the flexibility or accessibility that today's library services require. From what I understand, the stacks were put in first, and the building was designed around it, not what I consider proper architectural planning and design. Some folks will ask, "Why not renovate?" I understand that instinct, but from what I've read and seen, renovation just doesn't cut it. The bones of the building are too old, the system's too inefficient, and the space too constrained to make a third renovation worth the cost. It would be like trying to turn a typewriter into a laptop. It's just not built for what's needed now. Let me say something from the heart. A library is not just about books, it's about people. It's a place where a senior can read the paper and feel less alone, where a job seeker can apply for work, where a child can discover the joys of stories, where teens can gather safely after school. It's a place that brings people together, helps combat the loneliness, and quietly supports mental health and community well-being. Whether or not you use the library regularly, you benefit from living in a place where others can find that support and connection. Fifty years ago, our community had a vision and built a library that has served us all this many years. We've been enjoying the fruits of that investment ever since. Now, it's our turn to look ahead and do the same for future generations. Let's build a library that can serve the community of tomorrow, just as faithfully as this one has served us. This is for our citizenry and friends that are here in the council room and tuned into the internet. If you're curious about additional information, there's currently a visioning process underway for a brand-new library facility for better, to better serve future generations. Want to hear about it? Thank you for allowing me to speak at this August Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Braxton. Next speaker's card is Rachel Trichular. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. I saw several of you actually in the lobby of this building on Friday, where I had just snagged the last four tickets, me and my three young daughters, to the very popular Friday puppet show that the library puts on in the summer. And it was the third day in a row that my family had been to this library last week. And this is not atypical. Since my oldest daughter was born eight years ago, I would say I average coming to this library at least once a week. And it is also not an exaggeration to say that every time I see somebody I know, 95% of that time, it's another young family. This place is a lifeline for us. And there's no other free indoor place downtown, or really anywhere in the city, where I can bring my kids and let them be kids. And it's a running joke with my friends that, of course, we see each other here, because this is one of two or three places that we rotate through taking our kids to. And for my friends who now live out in Stonehouse or in Towano, this, the library, and walks around CW, are the two things that bring them downtown. It's a destination, it's a time extender, and as we all know, that is what's going to drive people spending time downtown, is what's going to drive people also spending money downtown and contribute to the vibrancy of our city. I cannot overemphasize how beneficial this downtown library has been in the life of my young family here in Williamsburg. We've been here for 12 years. We have invested in numerous ways in the committee, or in the city, with our time and our energy and our money, and we love living here. But it can also be hard as a young family. And there, I find that's something I have to advocate loud and hard for in our community, to find ways for our needs to be met and to encourage something that I think everybody agrees is necessary for our city's vibrancy and for our city's future. But decisions are not always made in that vein. But I also see, as others have spoken today, that the, when I go to the library, it is an incredibly intergenerational, diverse place that is meeting the needs of so many in our community. And that is such a rare and special thing to have in a public place, where people can come and feel comfortable and meet together and be a gathering spot in a way that we desperately need. And just as we have invested in the new police building, the new fire building to protect our physical safety, the library is such a cornerstone of people's mental and emotional and developmental well-being and building and knitting us together as a community. And I hope we see this decision to invest in a new library as a way to continue that. And when I, when I talk about all of the wonderful things that the library has done, I don't think that's evidence that all is well, and if we don't make any changes, it's going to continue to be able to provide those services. I see that as evidence that this is a group of people who is working hard with the resources that they have to give the best they can to their community, but they're asking for more so that they can do more and meet the needs now and into the future. This is a forward-leaning decision and investment to be made to support, again, an incredibly diverse portion of our community and support that gathering and a group of people that we can entrust our resources in to use well and wisely. I hope we continue to maintain that, the quaint feeling of our library, kind of the home-away-from-home feeling that it has there, but I hope that we also see this as the decision that it is, which is making a choice for our future and for our entire community to be able to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that concludes my speaker's cards, but if anybody else would like to come forward and address council, they're welcome to do so. Dr. Crambyel, welcome.
David Crambyel, 201 Harrison, and I'm here to strongly support the library. I'm a close friend with Chris Garrus and Sam Sadler here, and my wife's been on, who I care about deeply, on the library board, and I've been a supporter of the Friends of the Library for decades. So, I think it's terrific, and I totally support spending $20 million. There is one thing that worries me greatly, and it really stems from written publications about how we proceed here. So, I brought with my brochure, the fancy brochure that was printed, along with the videos in December, and in it says, "Following public input on the building's design, select a contractor." And then, of course, in my Friends of the Library letter that I got sometime in December or so, and Sandy Towers, I've met with her, she's the most beautiful person in the world, we're lucky to have her, and we need to do, make some corrections in my mind if we want to keep her. She and probably some key people like Sam and Chris, among others, said, quote, in bold print, mind you, "Our library is built on the cornerstone belief that access to information is essential to a healthy democracy." Now, I think we failed miserably in meeting both of those very positive, beautiful statements of who we are in Williamsburg. And I think about all the contributions I give to various places like CW and childcare societies and organizations, which the Chief of Police is now head of, to take care of battered women. And I think about, we should be emulating everything that people stood for to fight for our dependence, independence, in here in Williamsburg. We should be a model of democracy. And we failed humbly, you're all good people, terribly and unnecessarily. You could defend, as was just done, the fact that the renovation doesn't fly when you really, but we did not let people participate from the beginning. And worst of all, we never announced things. We didn't announce the charge to the committee and the names to the committee publicly in bold print, so people would know what was going on. Nothing wrong with meeting in secret, but you could have some part of your meeting. And then, of course, you did have, just 12 months after this process started, you had two duplicate meetings for people to participate, but all the decisions had been made, to speak of. And I just think, this needs to be reexamined and studied and corrections made, and perhaps some apologies made. The first detailed written report from the Evaluation Committee exists in the email I got on Thursday night for this meeting. The first fully-written detailed report. City Council, after this committee unilaterally chose of the three people, one in a secret meeting, never got a report. So, City Council never approved anything, except in March, months after the decisions were made, and now again. And it's all after the fact, and it was totally unnecessary unless you're afraid of democracy. And that worries me. In fact, it's terrible. So, what we do is, we need a complete review of what happened and why, in my mind. I want to stress, I support $20 million. I might even support another $6 million or $8 million to cover all the costs, paid out of my taxes, my taxes. But I want to see a discussion, and a really full discussion, of all the alternatives, and Chris Garrus has explained them to me, and I totally, we're in total sync. But this has to be totally and astronomically reversed with open meetings and a total discussion of how this makes sense with all the changes that have occurred. And then, we need to discuss how to fund it. I'm totally, fully funding everything that's needed, but then, I want other things caught, because it seems like we're spending money without public input, and we're heading ourselves into tax increases, which I will totally oppose, period. And I will look forward to talking with each of you individually about how we go forward, hopefully democratically and with open discussion. And I think we'll all reach agreement, but let's have the open discussions, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to come forward? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to background presentations and discussions. And first, we have the presentation and discussion, the public input process, and the recommendations of the Library Evaluation Committee. Tyler, welcome. Simone, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor Pons and members of City Council, and Mr. Trivitt. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to share some background on the Williamsburg Library Evaluation Committee process, present the outcomes of the public input meetings and the public survey, and offer a resolution on behalf of the committee regarding next steps. First, I'd like to introduce Nina Simone, Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees' Chair and Member of the Library Evaluation Committee, for some background on the library.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Nina Simone, and I have the privilege of chairing the Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees. The 11 citizens on this board are entrusted with the governance of the Williamsburg Regional Library system. And I'd like to share with you the opening statement from our most recent strategic plan. This plan acknowledges this time of rapid change with the understanding that success in the 21st-century world means we must develop new types of public services and new ways of delivering traditional library services. Williamsburg Regional Library will embrace its role as a community anchor and champion of democracy and information access. Williamsburg Regional Library will reimagine delivery services to nurture learning and enhance educational and family support, foster connections, and help build strong, resilient communities. The library will be a tireless innovator, an energetic partner with other community organizations, leaders, and local support to lift up area citizens and enable them to navigate and succeed in the rapidly changing world. When I mention "our" library to anyone in this city, they usually do this. They put their hand over their heart and they go, "Oh, I love our library." And this community absolutely loves its library. They'll say it's because it's cozy and friendly and it's so close to colonial Williamsburg. And if that was the whole story, it would be a lovely one, but that's not the whole story. This library is cozy and friendly, and it's close to the sheep. But it's also been recognized time and time again for excellence in service and programming, most notably with the distinction of Library of the Year in 2023. You see, the city of Williamsburg loves this library because this library is excellent. But in order to move forward as a community anchor, champion of democracy and information access, in order to continue to reimagine delivery services, help build strong and resilient communities, and be a tireless innovator and energetic partner, we must act as leaders now. While we all enjoy the present, leaders bear the particular burden of caring for the future. Our downtown library building has reached the end of its lifespan. The population of the community has doubled since its last expansion in the 1990s. And what we know about library design and creating inviting community spaces has changed. While this library is wonderful, and most of us enjoy it multiple times a week, this building cannot serve our vision for the future. The facility will not be able to serve the next generation as an energetic community partner and tireless innovator. It certainly will not be able to serve their cars. The Board of Trustees proposes the construction of a new downtown Williamsburg library, because we believe strongly that we must have a vision now to ensure our continued excellence in the future. Thank you.
So, the Williamsburg Library has been serving the greater Williamsburg area for over 100 years. It began in the front foyer of the St. George Tucker House. From there, it moved to the Ludwell Paradise House, and eventually to the Little Building at the corner of Francis and South England Streets. The library remained in that building until 1973, when the new Williamsburg Public Library Building was opened on Scotland Street. The library was renovated significantly in 1982, when the children's area and the theater wing were added, and in 1998, when additional space was added in the adult and circulation areas. So, fast forward to today, and the library is a busy place. Square footage per capita has not kept up with that busyness. We circulated over 1.2 million items last year and had almost half a million visitors. This chart shows Williamsburg Regional Library square footage per capita. So, as you look at the chart, the black line shows you how much square footage we have. So, you can see that big jump happened in the late 90s. That's when we built the James City County Library in 1996, and also renovated and added some space to the Williamsburg Library in 1998. But you can also see that black line sort of flatlining across the rest of the graph, because we haven't added any square footage since that time. You can see that we are falling behind. WRL is an amazing library system and exceeds the Virginia State Standards for libraries in every area except for one square footage. We are being confined by the lack of flexible space and the lack of 21st-century infrastructure to offer collections, programs, and services that this community needs. We do so much for the community, but we could do more with a new Williamsburg Library building. The Williamsburg Library on Scotland Street has been and will continue to be the library system headquarters, the main, central system headquarters, the main central library, the heart of the Williamsburg Regional Library system. James City County is currently proposing another small branch at the planned consolidated government center on Long Hill Road. This is envisioned to be a smaller branch at 25,000 square feet. The idea of this proposed project is not new. It is in response to identified square footage needs from a 2007 consultant study. In May of 2024, the city of Williamsburg released a request for proposals for a new Williamsburg Library building. Three proposals were received. In August, city council directed city manager to form a library evaluation committee. In September, the committee consisting of 10 members was formed. Members included two representatives each from city council, city of Williamsburg staff, WRL Board of Trustees, the Friends of WRL, and library staff. The committee met six times over the course of the following months. The committee thoroughly evaluated each of the three proposals. The committee focused on three elements: the qualifications, project characteristics, and project costs of the proposals. All three proposals met the space needs as identified by library staff. But one proposal presented a significant advantage over the other proposals and was determined to be the best value regarding cost and design. The committee recommended that city council enter into Phase 1 of an interim agreement, which would allow for Horrigan Timeoff Moss to conduct public input sessions and a public survey. I'd like to introduce Michael Schnexer, Lead Architectural Designer with Timeoff Moss Architects, to present the results of the public survey and public input sessions. Michael.
Welcome, sir. Mayor, council members. As Sandy said, I'm going to review the report that we created after the input sessions. We had two public sessions, both at the fire station on the 15th and 20th. Combined attendance over those was about 250 people. We had another 850, excuse me, another 600 or so responses virtually for a total of over 850 responses. If you, for those of you who didn't attend those sessions, we had a couple of stations set up about site organization, library trends, library programs, architecture, and parking. Each of those stations were supported by staff, both all from Horrigan, from Timeoff Moss, from library staff, to engage with the public in discussion about the subject matters of each of those things. The survey ran from the 15th, when the in-persons opened, through the end of the month, May 30th. First, we have some demographic information. So in the top, you see that about 25% of the respondents were from Williamsburg, the city of Williamsburg, with the remainder 75% from James City County and York County. That number is pretty visible throughout the rest. So in all of the other graphs, like you see at the bottom, the pale blue is city of Williamsburg, and then the dark blue is everybody else, and it more or less tracks that 75-25 split. We have age demographics, and then we have most used libraries. Again, I don't think any big surprises there. Some questions we asked of the respondents, so, you know, how do you currently use your library and features you'd like to see? These things were, again, not really surprising to us and meshed with the program that was outlined in the RFP that we responded to. We had a couple of questions that really weren't numbers and data. It was like narrative feedback. So the first was additional programs or programming you'd like to see in the library, consistent themes around technology. The theater was very popular. Some of the events in the theater were very popular. Baker Space received a lot of attention. Youth spaces, as was said earlier, whether it's tweens or teens. And then we put some unique ideas up there because when you ask so many people and you get so many responses, you get some really unique things. And then we get them, I think, questions about adding levels to the thing and making it Victorian. It was interesting to see those couple of spaces. There's a question or a comment earlier about being coziness. There was some commentary about quiet spaces that were maybe enforced quiet so that people could read their newspaper or crochet in peace. One of the stations was around site organization. The way this was presented was option one was preferred by the evaluation committee and by library staff. But we explained the other options that we had presented to the selection committee and maybe why they weren't as favorable or why they weren't selected. Again, what we asked also for was sort of narrative comments. We didn't ask people to tell us which option they liked, but a lot of people told us anyway and generally preferred option one. They felt like it made a lot of sense and probably primarily because it left the existing library to operate as long as possible. Asked a question about architecture, whether the public felt like it should tend toward being more traditional or tend toward being more modern. I think in this one, we gave five options, sort of number one being most traditional, number five being most modern, number three being in the middle. I think options two and four, sort of the in-betweens, weren't really well-understood. So I think that's why we have, like, the graph there shows dips in sort of options two and four. But if you average the responses, sort of weighted average, the red line represents, you know, the number that it would be, and it's just to the traditional side of down the middle of the road, which I think was kind of what we expected. We had a station on trends in libraries, sort of national trends, and whether those trends should come to the library, or what portions of those trends should come to your library. Again, not a lot of surprise here. Lots of calls flexibility, as this library needs to last for a long time, needs to be able to deal with the changes that might happen over the next 50-plus years. And coziness came up. Wellness was an interesting sort of response that we got with some regularity. Then, excuse me, again, unique things. It was interesting to see a couple of people bring up robotics, and again, sort of thinking about 21st century skills and the way the building might support that. We asked a question about parking, parking capacity. We've heard a lot of discussion over the months about parking capacity. Same sort of voting style. There were five selections, one being low visual impact and five being high capacity. Again, I think that two and four were not very well-understood as what does that mean? But again, the red line represents the weighted average, which means just on the low visual impact side of kind of balancing the two concerns. And that's it on the...
Thank you, sir.
So, once in a generation, a community has the opportunity to create something truly transformative, a legacy that will serve not only today's residents but generations to come. For Williamsburg, that moment is now. Our current library building, opened in 1973, has served us well, but it no longer meets the needs of a 21st century community. A library is more than bricks, mortar, and books. Investing in a new public library is not simply about replacing an old building. It is an investment in people. A great library is the beating heart of a community. It is part of our very social fabric, upholding people through every stage of life. It is where opportunity lives. It is where everyone, no matter their age, their background, their circumstance, everyone belongs. A new Williamsburg library will be more than a building. It will be a vibrant, flexible hub for learning, culture, and community life. It will be a place where children take their first steps towards literacy, where job seekers gain skills and confidence, where entrepreneurs find resources to grow, where neighbors meet and ideas flourish. It will be a legacy building, one that honors the past and meets the needs of the present and inspires the future. This community took a bold step in 1973 and built a library building that has served us well for over 50 years. Children who came to that library as preschoolers in the 70s brought their own children here in the 90s and early 2000s, and now they're starting to bring their grandchildren in for storytime. I'm grateful that back in the early 70s, our community had the vision and the boldness to move forward with building this library. This is our moment to create a library that reflects the best of who we are and will serve our community for the next 50 years. The Williamsburg Library has been called the jewel in the crown of Williamsburg. The time is now to envision and build a modern library worthy of our community's spirit, resilience, and aspirations. It's time for a new gem in the crown. I am pleased today to talk to you about the library and to offer this resolution passed unanimously by the Library Evaluation Committee for your review and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Sandy. Appreciate you being here. And Matt and Nina, thank you for participating, and to all those that spoke about the library. It is a wonderful place, there's no question. And probably one of the few people in this room who was there in 1973. As my mother was trying to get me more in tune to books, I should have worked harder. But I was there as a child, and I took my children there. And I looked forward to one day taking my children, my grandchildren, to a new library. There's no question that a library is, you know, the heartbeat of a community. And some of the speakers spoke more eloquently about it than I ever will, but I believe that with all my heart. And nothing would please me better to have a building erected that serves our community in the way that it does for the next 50 to 60 years. And I want to be a part of that, and I think this body does as well. And our community deserves it. And so we'd love to make that happen. That said, it's $26 million. There's probably some additional cost associated with that that have to be met. And I know we have a great relationship with the Friends of the Library, who are very eager to see this happen, and so hopefully we'll see some work with them to make this come to fruition. We are in an interesting spot when we consider library. You know, we've been in this regional system for many years, and we've expanded this library to meet the needs of not just the city residents, but the growth in the county. And we've been a willing partner and hope to continue to be a partner with James City County and York County. And so I guess the, and so now with them coming forward with a 25,000-square-foot library, I think we're still under the threshold of what we would need. I think in some of our conversations, you know, really we need about 150,000 square feet of library space. But with the advent of that new library being built in the county, I don't know if they settled on 50 or settled on 25,000 or...
It's 25,000 is what they're proposing.
But they've asked, James City County particularly has asked to revisit the agreement with the library, and York County has taken a position, hopefully not a permanent position. But I wonder if you can help me understand where we are in understanding the library, the operational agreement with our partners.
Great question. It's true, we've had a regional cooperative agreement since 1977, so it's a longstanding agreement. The regional library contract exists because of the cooperation of James City County and the city of Williamsburg. York County is a supplemental funder to that contract. And so I've spoken with all of the jurisdictional leaders about the library contract and where we stand with it. And I have to tell you, all of the jurisdictional leaders are very positive about the regional library system. They are supportive of the regional library system. I think everybody is in agreement that it's time probably to take a look at some of the provisions in the library contract. It had, you know, that library contract is from 2012, so it's time to maybe dust it off a little bit and review some of the things that are in there, just to make sure that it's fair for all parties involved. Everybody has that shared interest. I think that there's an agreement that the library system, the regional system, is of benefit to all the jurisdictions that participate. And I don't see any change in that.
And I would hasten to think that it would change, but things happen. So that leads me to if something were to happen. And let's say we do build a 50,000-square-foot library that, according to the numbers, 50,000 square foot library in an independent library system would only serve the city of Williamsburg residents predominantly. I guess we could have external relationships and try to drive visitation. But we would have a large building that far exceeded our needs.
That's right.
So that's concerning to me, and not just because there'd be more space than we need, but also there's operational expenses that come along with that. And so as I sit here, I love looking at this building, and I commend Horrigan and the team of putting this together and the work that we've done to get input from the users. I think, you know, it would be a phenomenal asset to the city. But I want to at least encourage you, in whatever ability you can, to, I think we need to see that operating agreement revised, understand what that means, so that we can move forward with the best information possible, so that we can then move forward with the library.
I absolutely agree. There's nobody who wants to see this library contract resolved more than I, right? I definitely would like to see it resolved. And I think that it's a good point, that the Williamsburg Library being the headquarters, so to speak, of our library system is the largest building in the system. And it's our most heavily-used library, so it's bringing a lot of people downtown, which has a lot of good benefits for the city of Williamsburg. But because the contract is open for modification, it is a time when you can say, okay, well, maybe we put some safeguards in there to protect our investment. I think that is, everybody, I think, is reasonable to that.
And I don't need to know the details today, but if you're saying that work is underway, that's very reassuring.
I have spoken with all three jurisdictional leaders and been assured that they are meeting this month and continuing meeting to have those discussions.
I may have some other questions or thoughts, but I'll turn now to Vice Mayor Dan.
Thank you, Sandy, for the presentation and for the others that spoke and for others that have contacted us either through email or are here today. I mean, obviously, nobody can debate what the impact the library has on this community, and you can hear the passion in the voice of the speakers for their families. I know my grandchildren have taken advantage of the library here, so I certainly appreciate the positive impact it has. And having been a member, one of council's representatives to the Library Evaluation Committee, who's been in the details, there's not a lot of questions I have. I did have a question similar to the mayor on the regional operational agreement and concerns about already that York's asked to renegotiate their portion, that it may be down the road, that it could be an impact on what the city's responsible for. And some of the other things you've heard in the community is, with this 25,000-square-foot library that's proposed in James City County, how do you see that impacting the usage on the building here in the city?
That's a great question. So that 25,000-square-foot third library location, we've been asking for that from James City County for a long time now. In 2007, it was recommended. It's been in the CIP in the early 2010s, and then it came out and is put back in in 2018. So it's been, it is not, I just want to allay any fears that it's not a response or a reaction to any of the regional conversations that are happening. This is a building that has been in the works for a long time. So I've answered, I've been asked that question before, well, how does this new 25,000-square-foot library affect the amount of square footage that we need here at the Williamsburg Library? And what I would say is, we are replacing square footage that already exists. The existing library is about 40... The existing library is about 42,000 square feet, and the proposal is to replace that with a 40,000-square-foot library with a 10,000-square-foot theater. So it does add a little bit of extra square footage, but the bulk of the square footage that is in this proposal is replacement library square footage. Did that answer your question, Vice Mayor Dan?
Well, yeah, partially, and then from a usage standpoint, do you envision significant drop in what we know what now, it's what, 76, 78%?
That's right.
James City County residents, do you see a significant decrease in participation at this library, usage at this library, based on that 25,000-square-foot building?
That's a great question, yes. So what I expect to see is, I think that James... There will be a lot of new libraries. This is what typically happens when you build new library spaces, especially when you build new ones with innovative features. We saw this with the IDEA Studio, which is the children's renovation at the James City County Library. You increase the number of people who've never been to a library before. So I don't expect that the usage of this library will decrease by much, if at all. I expect that that building, again, is a smaller building. Each building will have unique features. We still imagine the Williamsburg Library to be the cultural hub. It's the only one that has the theater. It will have a lot of adult programming and senior programming and lectures. The James City County Library existing on Croker Road is kind of our family hub. It's the one that has the renovated children's area, and this fall is going to have a playground in the backyard. And we envision the James City County Library at the Government Center, should they decide to build it, to be the technology hub. So that's where we'll have the largest maker space, although there will still be one here. So the three libraries will be very different, and I envision that you might go to a different library depending on what your needs are that day. You want to go to a 3D printing class, you might be headed to the James City County Library at the Government Center. You want to go to a performance in the theater, you're going to be headed here. So I... What typically happens when you build new library structures, you gain users. You get more users than ever. So that's what I expect to happen. I don't see this library becoming unused in any stretch of the imagination.
And then one last question. We've heard a lot, there's been a lot of discussion throughout this whole process about a renovation versus a new building. And did you ever have an official proposal for renovation or some estimate on renovation to bring it up to your and your staff's desired expectations?
Thank you. We did have a study that was done, an architectural assessment that was done in 2018 by RRMM Architects. Greg Luke Meyer led that study. It's available on our website if you're interested in reading it, but it did explore the option of renovation, because certainly renovation is always an option. A building can be renovated. But this... What the conclusion of the report was is that it was a very similar amount to renovate that space up to the standard it needed to be renovated, as it was to tear it down and build a new one. But most importantly, renovation did not solve the fundamental issues with that building. So part of the problem with this building, and you heard it mentioned earlier by one of the speakers, it does not meet today's ADA standards. And that 2018 architectural assessment didn't actually touch the theater, which is a big piece of the ADA, what needs to be brought up to ADA standards. It also didn't touch the elevator, which is another ADA issue that we have at the library. But it also doesn't address the layout of the library. If you've been in the Williamsburg Library, you know that it is, find your way. It's like a maze getting through there, right? It's been... And that's because it's been renovated significantly twice, so we've added on to it. Actually, we've added on on all four sides. So it's really changed what was originally a quite efficient layout to a building that's not efficiently laid out. Because of that, we have to have four service desks, because the building is so sprawling and chopped up and cut up, we have four service desks. And what that means is that 64 hours a week, 52 weeks a year, we have to man two additional desks that we wouldn't have to man in a building that was more efficiently laid out. And that translates into, I mean, personnel, make no mistake, is our highest cost. So that translates into a high cost that's an ongoing operational cost. So having a library that is more efficiently laid out saves money in the long term. And then lastly, renovation, if we renovated that library, we'd likely have to expand it in order to meet the programming requirements of today's library of the community today, and it would only restrict parking that much more. We know that there are 88 spots in this lot here, and that there are not enough. We hear all the time about the struggles that people have with parking. If you think about the theater seating, 260 people, 88 spots, the math doesn't work, right? And so there's often times that people aren't able to find a spot in the lot. If this, with this proposal, we double the number of parking spots that are available, and that's significant for people and being able to use the library. We also increase the number of accessible spots. If you need to get into the library and you need to park in an accessible parking spot, it's not the... They're not close to the door. They're as close as they can be with the way it's configured right now. But as you can see from the picture, if we rent... If we built a new library, we would fix that problem. So yes, that was a long answer to, yes, we have considered, really deeply evaluated renovation versus reconstruction. And I actually reached out to Greg Luke Meyer, the architect who did the 2018 study a couple of weeks ago, and I said, Greg, you know, give me... Boil this down for me in layman's terms, what does this mean? And he wrote me a long list of reasons why, you know, renovation was not advisable and what problems it would not solve. And then he sent me another email just after that, and he said, suffice it to say, a renovation is not going to save the city any money. I said, thank you. That's what I needed to hear. So yes, we have looked into it, and it just doesn't solve some of the intractable problems from that building.
Thank you. And yet also wanted to acknowledge members of the Library Evaluation Committee that put a lot of effort into bringing this where it is today. But as already been mentioned, that, you know, obviously, we have... I don't think anybody's going to argue again that we have a need for a library. It's just, you know, how do we fit that cost in?
Of course.
We were at 20 million, now we're at 26 million. We thought we had partners contributing and likely be in the 30 million range with FF&amp;E, so that's... We'll just have to take all of that into consideration moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I first want to really thank the work of... I think those who were on the Library Evaluation Committee, I think you all, as shown through the timeline of the process, have put in a tremendous amount of work and effort to this, and I'm just very grateful to those of you who were on that committee. Many of my questions have already been answered, and so we won't rehash those, but I do have one about square foot, square footage. And so when we look at what is the square foot needed for the regional system, I understand that we've got the library out in the Croker Branch, and then the proposed 25,000-square-foot in James City County, and then 40,000 here, which doesn't include the theater. So 50,000 of you... And so all told, somebody does math, and is that in the standards that you use to evaluate, not just you, but the standards of which libraries are evaluated? How does that put the library's RWRL in relation to sort of best practices?
That's a great question. Thank you. So that would put us, if both this building proposed and the proposed library at the Government Center go, actually get built, that would put us at 110,000 square feet. So very, very briefly, we would meet the state standard. So when I look at this library here, the growth that's happening, the population growth, it's no secret, is happening in James City County, not the city of Williamsburg. So when we build this library here in Williamsburg, this library will serve us for the next 50 years. Any additional square feet that we need to add to the library system, I see happening, you know, in where the population growth is occurring. So that... I don't see a need to build more square footage here than the 50,000-square-foot feet that we've proposed, which includes the 40,000-square-foot library and a 10,000-square-foot theater. This library will be the only one that has that theater space.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, something that has been brought up over the course of the discussion and dialogue about the library is, you know, changes in how people use libraries, right? We obviously have heard a lot about the use, how it's a community space, and have been, you know, no longer a young mom, but, you know, once used to be a young mom, so I'd like to be a fairly young mom here and raising my child in the city, you know, knowing firsthand, like, what a important facility and institution it is. But, you know, we also think about the use of books, right? And so, not really well-formed question, but given technology and how much books are now no longer, you know, structural, like, things that you hold in your hand and turn the pages necessarily, how do you respond to queries about, well, do we really need, like, as much space, given that so much is available, an audiobook, and, you know, really, why aren't libraries... Why isn't, like, sort of the growth in what we need for space sort of offset by the less growth we need, or the reduction we might need in shelving? And I'm just curious, from your professional, I mean, this is your expertise, like, how do you think about the space needs and sort of counter those questions about, well, wait, why are libraries needing to be getting bigger when everything is, like, basically, like, you know, on my phone right now?
That's a fair question. So it is true that about 28% of our circulation is digital material, so eBooks or downloadable audio. But interestingly, that's a trend that's happening everywhere. That doesn't translate into less square footage, less linear feet of shelving that needed in the library. We still have the bulk of our collection, the bulk of our circulation is in print material, so we're still pretty strong in that area. But you're right, the library has changed in the way that it's used. Here's an example. We, you know, the library, we have maker spaces in our libraries now, and digital memory labs, where you can take your home movies that are on, you know, VHS tape or even Super 8, you know, tape, and you can make them into digital copies. So that's a new use of library spaces. But we, at the Williamsburg Library, we don't have any space for that. So whenever we have to, whenever we want to create a new service for the community, it comes at a cost. Something else has to be sacrificed. So we took the quiet study room and turned it into a maker space here at the Williamsburg Library. And that was a decision that we made because it was the right decision to make, but there were some people that were like, well, hey, where's the quiet study room going to be? We're like, well, you know, it's not, you know, we can try to put you in a meeting room if you need to. So we've had to make these sacrifices because the spaces are used differently than they are. When this library was built, we had no programming room for children. And it was added in the 1982 renovation, they added a program room for children, and now we need a program room for tweens, we need a program room for teens. So there's... The way that people are using libraries has definitely changed. They still check out books, but they also... The programming that happens is very different. So having meeting spaces and people spaces has become a real focus for us.
Yeah, thank you. I was interested in seeing that in the public survey about what are the most important features you'd like to see in a new library. It looked like the number-one answer, that got the most, was expanded collection, and I was like, oh, I wonder what that looks like and what that means.
It's interesting. People think that because digital circulation, you know, like I said, it's 28% of what we do now, that doesn't translate into a 28% reduction in linear square, linear shelving space, so.
All right, well, thank you. And I know there have been many other questions already addressed, and I really appreciate the discussion thus far, and I know that, as had been mentioned, we have a lot of things that we're thinking about and balancing and moving pieces, and those things are necessary to deal with, but, you know, the importance of the library, I can't think of another institution that is more important to the fabric of a community other than perhaps, like, you know, schools. And so they're just so integral to who we are and to our values. So thank you very much for everything thus far.
Thank you for the presentation, Sandy, and I don't have too many more questions other than what have already been asked. I, too, am a great supporter of the library. I don't use it that much now, but seeing all of the moms with their kids for the puppet Friday Day sort of reminded me of how my mom used to take us to the library and how important it was, and the fact that we have this huge group of moms and kids in this community that oftentimes don't get thought about. We think about retirees, and we think about college students, and we don't think that we have this very, much larger-than-we-thought group of those in between who really take advantage of the library and all that it offers. And every Monday, I get the WRL in the news, and I look through them, and I often say, boy, wouldn't that be great to go see that movie? Or, boy, I could even be helped out by a computer course. So there are a lot of things that are out there. And so I look at this, not necessarily as a new library for me, because like Bobby and a couple others and Sam, I was here in 1973 when the new library opened, and my window of opportunity is not as great as some in the audience. So I look at this as an opportunity for the future, for our children and the next generation. Sorry. Sort of get teary there a little bit. Anyway, so back to the practical matters. When we talk about renovation and we talk about the number of square footage, I thought you said that 150,000 square feet would be sort of what would be needed for our population.
That would definitely... 150,000 square feet would be more than one square foot per capita right now, but it would be, we would meet that probably in about 2035. So as you're thinking, you know, when you're building buildings, you guys know that when you're building these municipal buildings, you are thinking about today's population, but you're also trying to project ahead as best you can and make sure that we're planning ahead for the future, so that we don't get 10 years down the road and think, oh, my gosh, we need another library. But if we do need another library in 15 or 20 years, I would imagine it's going to be in James City County somewhere.
And I think back, I think it was 2023 when we first started talking about two libraries, and if I remember, it was 30... At that point, there was an agreement, there would be a 35,000-square-foot in James City, built in James City County, and then looking at 35,000 built here in the city. And so if we think of 25,000 in the county to be built, then we're looking at 470 from 20, 45,000 here. So if we look at programming in the proposed library of 40,000 plus 10,000 for a library equals 50,000, we're only 5,000 square feet greater than what that 2023 program or agreement was, correct?
That's right, that's right.
Let's see, what other questions did I have? Oh, I also completely agree that a library is far more than checking out books. I've visited a few, and I've seen all the different, you know, puzzle boards and Lego building compartment areas and place for plants and sowing, and it really does serve the needs. And as I say, coming on Friday, I realized, too, the huge demographic and cultural background that is represented by those who use our library, so I definitely support it. And you also made a comment about the theater being the only one that would be servicing the entire population.
Right.
So if someone wants, like, if the garden club wants to use the theater, do they come and rent that space? Is that how it works?
So we do have procedures that govern the theater rental fees, so there are different fees for nonprofits versus for-profits. And then, you know, if it's a library program or one of our partners, like Head Start, they, we allow them to use the theater at no cost. But, yeah, there is a cost structure.
Yeah, I know it's a very popular place to be for a lot of individuals, and as Bobby said, I think it really serves a need for people looking for... And as Bobby said, I think it really serves a need for people looking for community.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And when we talk about, you know, the library and the percentages that from our input sessions, that mirrors what we have been recognizing all along, that, what, seventy-five percent of the usage? And I know for people who live in Kings Mill, anyone who wants to use the library, regardless of a new one being built in James City County, the likelihood of them coming here is far greater than than going there.
Absolutely.
And and have you all done any studies as far as economic impact of the library?
We have. We did a survey in twenty eighteen where we surveyed about three thousand people responded to the survey. And we asked them, what do you do before and after you go to the, specifically about the Williamsburg Library? And we found sixty-four percent, and again, this is, we created the survey, so, you know, it's as scientific as as librarians are, but we, sixty-four percent of the people said that they go somewhere before or after that's in the city area. And actually, we we asked them to tell us where they go. And so we actually have a list of all the different places, you know, Baskin Robbins, The Cheese Shop, walking down to where they go before or after. So we we do know that a library with with, you know, this building alone gets about seven thousand people through the doors every week. That's a lot of people that are coming down to the downtown area. And and they are, you know, they're getting coffee at Whole or, you know, walking around and shopping. So we know that a library is an economic driver because it gets people to come downtown. It gives them a really good reason, a really good motivation to come downtown. And if our parking is better, then we'll even help that.
Parking. So so I guess that is a factor of what what's around a library really does help drive the the business, the business, so to speak, the visitation, which to me would be one reason why perhaps not as much in the, at the Kroger Library, because you go there for a specific purpose.
Yes.
There's not really much around it to to enjoy.
That's right. It's definitely a destination where we see people that come to the Kroger Library, they come and then they leave and they go off and do other things. We see people come here and then walk over to Merchant Square or Drive Over. But definitely, it becomes one stop in in many stops they make that day.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And also all the helpful information as well. You know, the library is such a beacon of this community. And one of the things that I think makes it so special are its programs, you know, the children's programs, expanding teenager programs as well, adult and senior programs, and also just its reach in the community, not just with residents, but also university students coming to use the library. I always joke because my mom actually comes from Richmond sometimes to use the Williamsburg Library. And, you know, I joke and say, you know, I thought she would be visiting me, but, you know, she spends all of her time at the library. So I think that shows also people from not just the seven-five-seven Williamsburg area, but also its reach into other parts of Virginia as well, is something that I think makes it super unique. I did have one question. As we had budgeted twenty million dollars originally and with the estimate coming back at twenty-six now, and this may be a question for here again, but I wanted to see with the number at twenty-six million now, if we could get maybe a list of what a, so we have the estimate for what a twenty-six million dollar library looks like, but what we would lose if we brought it down to twenty? Going back to the programs and technology and resources being such a vital part of what makes the current Williamsburg Library unique, I'm just interested to see if we were to go a little bit below the twenty-six million, what would we be losing? And I think that really would show to you our investment at the twenty-six million number as well. So not sure if that would be a question for here again.
Good, because I can't answer.
I want to try and and do miserably. So I'm an architect, not a contractor, so I'm not really great with the numbers.
Yes.
But we have talked about this, I think, the last time that we were in front of the evaluation committee. Twenty-six to twenty is a twenty percent drop in dollars, but it's, you don't lose just twenty percent of the building because there are parts of the expenditures that don't scale down like that, like the demo of the police station or the site work that has to happen around it. So you would, I think, it'd be easy to say you would have to lose more than twenty percent of the building to lose twenty percent of the cost of the project. And we could certainly go through the exercise and tell you what that is, but that's like losing the whole theater or like losing twenty-five percent of the rest of the building. I mean, it would be a significant bite out of the program.
I think that's helpful to know as well, looking at the twenty-six number or around, I guess, thirty million in total, just going forward. I know we have some more steps until we get to the final process, a final decision, but I think that's very helpful to know moving forward.
Yeah, if I may just follow, I think if if we understood a little better, and let me just back up to say, the building at twenty-six million, I think, is a really good opportunity for us. But if we only had twenty million, six, so what would we have to cut out of that? And I think that might be an interesting exercise for us and the community to understand that it may not, you know, it may be beneficial for us to find that six million dollars.
Again, certainly an exercise we can do. I don't have the answer for you today.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're not going to make a decision today on this, but I think we've we've asked some good probing questions and left the library folks with, you know, some some homework to to work on. And to William's point, I think that'd be a good exercise and really helping to understand where we are with the regional agreement would be beneficial. But that said, you know, we can't keep it on the shelf for, you know, extended period of time. And so at some point, I would like counsel to be thinking about how we should move forward next period of time without putting a date on it. Okay, all right. But next we have, Davenport Company is going to come and do a presentation and discussion on the city's debt profile and financial position. This might help us understand what we can afford.
Over there, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Welcome.
All right, good to be here, appreciate it. Behind me is Tyler Smith, and it would have been Jimmy as well, but he's on vacation today.
Oh, we missed him.
So I'll wait until we hand out what is going to be up on the screen as well. So again, my purpose today on behalf of Davenport is really to be educational. No actions being requested. Again, we're going to try to give you a profile of your debt portfolio, where you've been, and with some of the things that are being talked about going forward. So with that said, let me just cut right to the chase. A little background here, for those in the audience and those watching, we've had the good fortune of serving as your financial advisor, which is a fiduciary responsibility for about three decades. I've had that opportunity and appreciate it. Hopefully, don't take that for granted. It's a, it's a wonderful city and it was my parents' place many years ago when they were alive, so, know well. That said, we were involved with you when you did your first piece of debt, as well as getting your first debt rating. They were not done at the same time, but again, we've come a long way since then. And as a result today, the two major credit rating agencies, Moody's and Standard and Poor's, we enjoy either a triple A, which is the highest possible from Standard and Poor's, and one below that from Moody's at that double A one. So again, those terminology on the left-hand side is not mine, that's theirs, so I want to point that out. But I did think it would be helpful to give the citizens and of course, the the council some of the commentary that was made as recent as last summer when we did our last financing. So as a precursor to doing that financing, we went to the credit rating agencies, and these were in short order what they had to say. And I think it's important to point out that from their perspective, independent of ours as your advisor, they made certain important commentary, including talking about debt and liabilities. And we mean liabilities, we mean also your pensions as well as your OPEB obligations, your longer-term obligations. So Moody's called it and said that you had, from their perspective, and again, they cover both Virginia nationally, they said you had a below-average long-term liabilities, and they expected that to remain manageable. They also were very much cognizant of the debt that was being talked about just a few moments ago as it related to the perspective for the library. So none of that and none of this comes as a surprise to them. They said that factors that could lead to that upgrade to the to the triple A, you could see there, is some more growth and diversification of the local economy and continued ongoing surpluses the city has, even as it takes on additional debt in the next several years. So again, you continue to do that, we see the city moving upward over time. Last point here, this incorporated what was roughly a sixty-five million dollar borrowing through the HTRFA. You may say, why is that not considered the city debt per se? And that's because those are dedicated revenues that are outside of the general fund. So again, we've done a variety of things, we're proposing a variety of things to do going forward, but again, only a portion of it is from the actual general fund, which is what I'm addressing today mostly. So again, Standard and Poor's has you at the triple A, cannot be any higher. And you could see there, they talk about the regionalism of the overall Virginia Beach, Norfolk, and Newport News area that they rope you into, if you would. They view your management practices as high as possible. They talk about the fact that you are structurally balanced. And then the fourth bullet point there, they talk about manageable debt and limited additional borrowing. And they talk about in their report, the expectation that you will be doing about twenty million dollars. Now, I've been listening, of course, aware of the fact that that twenty million may have bracket creep and has moved to possibly twenty-six. That is not going to be something that will change anything materially. Relatively speaking, what they're going to care about is your ability to continue to pay for that debt, to meet that debt. And that debt, frankly, will probably hit its apex in about twenty twenty-nine, when if you look at the overall structures of this. So again, it's going to behoove us, us, the collective us, as staff and yourselves, and hopefully, if I'm still around, to make sure that we do those things necessary, that we have continued structural balance. So lastly, they too incorporated and factored in the HTRFA project. And again, that is not anything different from the Moody's folks. So what we did here, and you've seen this before from us, is we feel like if we can compare Williamsburg to those surrounding us as well as those nationally, it could be helpful and looks at different ways to think about cash flows, ability to take on debt, ability to meet existing debt. And so we look at the peer comparatives. The way we did this, you could see sort of visually, there you are in that dark green, and we tried our best to to compare. It's not a perfect comparison, certainly Williamsburg's a fraction of the size of of a Virginia Beach. But nevertheless, we wanted to look at these and let you see that of the seventeen, seven of those have at least one triple A rating. So the takeaway here in part is that we're not only comparing you to your neighbors, but a lot of your neighbors are very highly rated. We can see that here, the populations, Williamsburg, literally a rounding error with Pecosin when you compare that to a Virginia Beach, which is actually the largest population of a city in the Commonwealth. We have a good fortune of of working with them. But again, the point here is that you can see of the seventeen, you and Pecosin are really on the smaller side. And that speaks to the overall structure, the integrity, many, many factors, and debt just being one of them. Because it's not easy to be in that triple A category when your population is that limited. That is alone sometimes a negative factor. But again, you've you've sort of gone beyond that. So a couple of important things here, when I start to look at debt, when I start to think about how you compare, you'll notice here that your real estate tax rate is well below the average, and it's also arguably the law, the smallest of any city in the Commonwealth. What does that mean to us? Nobody wants to see tax rates go higher, but what it means to the rating folks is that you could still raise your your rate, no matter how unfavorable and popular it is, and still not be an outlier. That's the mindset that they have when they think of you and they say, what is your willingness to pay? What's your ability to pay? And they see here that you have an ability relative to your neighbors because it is that much more favorable. Next thing, they take a look at the overall assessed value of the community. And you'll notice I use the term here taxable assessed value. Obviously, because of the university, Colonial Williamsburg, so much of your valuable areas are not taxable per se. And we see that a lot in college towns. But nevertheless, again, we see that your taxable side is just a shade over three billion. And then I think it's going to be important to show you in the next page, what we then do with that is we compare that to the taxable dollars per capita. And what you find is we are very much above the regional average at almost two hundred thousand dollars per capita. That's important because again, when I show so much of what you have is not taxable, and then you see here that you're still above it, that means that you really do have very solid properties, valuable properties relative to the population. It's another way that these rating agencies look at relative wealth. Surrey County is very small, not a typo, that has the nuclear facility there, that makes all the difference, as you can imagine. So again, we work with them as well, but not a not a typo there. Okay, let's turn to another concept that helps drive local governments to either be highly rated or not so highly rated, and that is what I'll call your rainy day fund, your unassigned fund balance. Over the time, there's been different names in terms of, as the accounting firms and the folks over at Gatsby has required, but today, that rainy day fund is called the unassigned fund balance. And so on a dollar basis, it's solid, twenty-five million dollars. But really, what matters here is what is it relative to the general fund, your operating revenues? And you can see there that you are at the very top of having your fund balance, if you would, your rainy day fund, relative to your annual operations. That is almost fifty-three percent. The locality average is a healthy twenty-five percent. So that begs the question, well, do we have too much money? Should we use some of these dollars? I would beg to differ. I would say it puts you in good stead, but when you look at having these kinds of dollars, it also does something very, very important, does several things very important. One is it churns off interest earnings that help keep your tax rate down. So for the citizens, it's important to realize that we can actually earn more money with our money sitting in the bank than it will actually cost us to borrow money. So we're winners in that perspective. So we're winners in that perspective. The second thing is it further helps us to keep or get close to that AAA. Because I always like to say cash is king, and the folks at the rating agencies seem to feel the same way. And so again, we want to make sure that the money is being used very wisely, but also helps keep the tax rate down. It also helps provide a cushion so that if we do have some unforeseen problems, we have excess dollars there. And that's an important concept. So let's turn to the debt profile now that I've sort of tried to quickly though, give a little framework of the health of the overall city as it relates to finances. So what we've got in effect is really two parts of debt. The dark green is your existing debt. But we also have out there a bond anticipation note which comes due next fall. That is part of your planning for the police station. And so that is another roughly 24 and a half million. All of that's been factored in by us, all that's been factored in by the rating agencies. So from their perspective, roughly, they look at here, this is your debt portfolio once it's in effect amortized come next fall. So this is the way they look at that. Your overall payments will be upwards of about 3.7 million. That's an estimate out in 2029. And the good news here, your staff does a tremendous job of factoring in cash flows to be ready for that 2029 timeframe. So I think that's important that citizens know that as well. So a couple of things here, you know, we've got certain policies. I say we, I'm talking about the city. Those policies are best practices. One of those is that just sheer amount of debt compared to the assessed value, again, that's the taxable assessed value. So if we were able to add all the value of properties that are not taxable, this ratio would be even lower. But as you can see here, it's still a very strong ratio, well below your policy of almost 3%. It's roughly 1.5%. So again, you start out from a very good position of strength. Then you can see here how that compares you. Interestingly enough, James City County for the moment is the lowest in that area. But as you know, there is considerable capital funding that's coming with regard to their projects as well. They'll still be in a solid position, but you can see you really are well below the peer group average, another strength of yours. Then we have what I call your credit card, your debt service versus expenditures. So the credit card, because basically what this says is that in any given dollar of revenues, or in this case expenditures, we're not going to spend more than 10 or 12 cents per dollar on debt. You can see where you are right now, you're literally half of that. So I like to tell folks, if you think about, if you're fortunate enough to have a mortgage, bankers don't like to have more than about 25 cents on every dollar that you earn, go to debt service or go to your mortgage. You basically have about 6 cents of every dollar going to your collective mortgages, if you would. So you're really in a much stronger position than an individual would be, but you're perpetual. And that's why, again, we continually want to make sure that we stay within those dotted red lines so that again, we have the ability to take on new projects because again, we are perpetual. So how does this have you compare? When we add in other liabilities as well, as I mentioned earlier, we stay well below 10 cents on the dollar, we're 10%. And then you can see again, some very highly rated local governments, like Virginia Beach is almost there at 12%. And so again, we're literally well positioned, and that's important. That includes that takeout of the ban that we talked about. And I'll just go backwards for a second. Oh, I guess it won't go backwards, maybe it will. Yeah, there you could see in 28, 29, when the ban comes out, it pops up a little bit. So all of that is factored in. So what I'd like to do now is turn to what we'll call that current capital plan. This again, will be an extension of what we talked about at the retreat or the advance. And so again, the city has borrowed about $35 million for the police station, other capital projects. And it also looks at another 20 million for the library. And that would potentially be, given what I'm understanding, another 6 million or thereabouts, if indeed that's the will of the council. We can certainly adjust our numbers accordingly, if you'd like to see that. But I do think the relative magnitude is not going to change very much. One of the reasons for that is that when we looked at borrowing this $20 million, even though it's a generational project and folks talk about how it goes back to the 70s and what have you, we've really only assumed that short of the interim funding that we're going to do as it gets constructed, the permanent payout will be 25 years in payout. So we can always adjust that a little bit because it's certainly within reason to fund something of this magnitude over 30 years. That is, or up to 30 years, that's not going to be in any way viewed as kicking the can. So I point that out, I'm not suggesting right now we do that, we may not need to even do that, but there are some relief valves. The other element too though, as you've been around me long enough to know, we always try to put up a higher interest rate assumption than what typically happens. We may have our luck run out on that one, but hopefully not. It's still one of those things that we try to build in a cushion to do this. Lastly, we monitor for refunding opportunities, for savings, nothing per se right now, but inevitably, there's probably some things that will work. So again, this capital program that we presented to you, it is almost 55 million. The 24 and a half million that was completed, that we did that ban back, hard to believe now, it was almost, it was almost three years ago. It's due again next October. We could always take it out earlier, but it's at a very favorable rate. And while rates are good, we think we should at least take a look at that closer come the new calendar year. Back in '23, we completed fiscal year '24, we did some $10 million of projects, we locked that in for a little under 4.6%. And you can see where that is. So lastly, this is proposed for what would be again, next fall. And that is roughly for the moment, $20 million to bring the total funding to about 55 million. So if it moved up 6 million or thereabouts, it'd be a little over about 60 million of total project funding requirements. Again, all of this, up to the 20 million, was factored into the rating agencies' work that I just cited over the last few minutes. So no surprises here, and they will not be surprised. Well, if you can follow all this, whole lot of numbers, whole lot of graphs, I can't even see it myself, but having worked with it, I kind of know what it is. And so I will say to the audience and everyone, what we really see is when the debt hits its apex in the 2029 timeframe, it's roughly about a million dollars more than it is today. The good news here is that your staff has been thinking about this for several years. And as a result, when we talked about it at the retreat, there is that sense of how to take care of that to continue to be structurally balanced. Will it be as much as that all told? I don't think so. Again, because we purposely add to the interest rate and be extra cautious when it comes to looking at how we borrow this. So we feel it'll be better than that. But nevertheless, that's the look of all this. So if it is that dramatic, wanted you to see what it does to your self-imposed financial policies. You're still well below that planning rate and the ceiling. I would point out also, we use a denominator that historically has no re-valve kicker to it. I think that would be even more positive. So we don't even think we'll approach that 2% level, but nevertheless, we're showing it that way. Then you can see here, if we do that, it still puts us below the peer group average. Again, very strong. The next one is that credit card I spoke to, could possibly go as high as 8%. Still a very solid two percentage points below the 10% planning and the 12% ceiling. So once again, nothing that gives us any cause of concern, and it continues to drop down in subsequent years. Once again, you can see what we look like, even when we do that, we're still at the very bottom in a good way in terms of the overall liabilities with our debt service versus our governmental expenditures. So some of the observations in all of this, you can see here, the projected debt, the number may seem large, but in reality, your ability to handle this type of debt, your demonstrated ability to handle this type of debt, you're meeting all of your financial policies, then all of a sudden recognizing that you have an extraordinarily solid rainy day fund to help with unexpected situations. All of those things are positives. Someone might say again, how's our tax rate if we had to raise taxes? Again, it's the lowest in the Commonwealth. For a city, it's amongst the lowest in the region. I understand nobody's going to be happy if you have to raise it even one penny. But again, I get paid to give you the perspective of what is viewed by investors outside, and the investors really, the proxy is the rating agencies. They're your first line, if you would, to investors. And lastly, this is a compliment to you and your colleagues and those that came before you in the last decade or so. You've really done or are doing three very multiple generation projects. And of course, you're talking about adding to that the library, which would be then four multi-generational projects in a little over a dozen years. Just the last page here, again, you've continually produced balanced budgets, you've been able to add to your fund balance, your rainy day fund. And as a result, you rank first amongst your peers. If that were not the case, I would let you know that. But again, you're positioned very well. Lastly, if you'll have me back, there's two really things I want to talk about, and we talked about it at the advance. One is we're going to be talking about doing some utility revenue bonds. They don't count in the general fund because they are consists solely of user fees. Those that get the benefits actually pay for that. We're looking at some 27, 30 million over the next decade, starting with what I hope will be acceptable to council, probably something in around the 8 to 10 million dollar range over the next year or so, and that come as early as this fall. So we're going to talk about that hopefully in the next month or two. But that again, doesn't count against the general obligation. One of your best practices is that's been a self-supporting fund, and it actually has effectively almost no debt outstanding, another strength of the city. So this will be done prudently and make sure several critical projects are done in the water and sewer area. Lastly, we will be back here also in the next couple of months. The HTRFA, we're going to ask to do an interim funding for about $7 million. Those will also be not general obligation, they're going to be based on a moral obligation. It's more about timing. We've got certain things happening with regard to cash flow that we're going to need, and that ultimately, once the project's done over the next several years, those dollars will come back in and help pay off. What we see is roughly that $7 million or a good portion of that. We still have the ability to pay cash on anything left over, but this is the most strategic way we looked at that. And I don't want to overly do that here, but again, that's also been baked into the cake, if you would, about other indebtedness, but it's not general obligation indebtedness. So with that said, maybe the city manager wants to maybe add anything, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rose, I think you covered it well.
Mr. Rose, thank you for the report. You know, I always very excited to hear about our good position that this council's worked for, but previous councils for many, many decades to set the trend of who we are as a community. And I think we've demonstrated with our staff and councils, good stewardship. And so thank you for bringing that to our attention. On this chart here, library funding that you couldn't see, there's a dip in 2039, 40. It's almost as if the subsequent blue line from 2040 are too large, because they get larger than they were the previous years. What happened?
So I'd have to look at the specifics. I suspect that just has to do with that 10-year note that gets paid off that I pointed out. So it really has to do with the existing debt, when it gets done, its term is over, and then we term out the remainder of it the subsequent year.
And that's part of the library?
That would be, yes, part of all of that, yes, sir. Part of the combination of the library, the police station, both those projects, actually, yeah.
I think the blue line representative of just the library ban, but it just seems like it's, I don't know if it was a typo, but...
That's not a typo, though.
Because it gets more proportionally larger. Okay, so you know, if we were to consider, just talking about the library, you factored in the 20 million. Obviously, to do the library, as it's been proposed, is 26 million. And absent Mr. Braxton making a sizable donation, we're going to have to find that money somewhere. I think we will need you to come back and demonstrate what that would look like to our finances. I know that in the past, when we've talked about projects, we've talked about how those projects get funded, whether it's a tax increase or through rate increase or just the natural progression of increased valuation, which is still a tax increase. Is that something that we're putting together?
Sure.
Because I think we're going to need to see that and understand that as we move forward in that.
No problem.
Okay, so the report's great, glad to see that we're still in good shape. Always amazed that we've stayed so far below our debt capacity. But you know, I think, you know, clearly, there's been a great deal of spending in the city over the last few years with all the projects that you've identified. Those are necessary projects to make, you know, make Williamsburg what it is. And I think the consideration of a library, while it'd be nice to, if we did these projects every 10 years, those aren't the cards we were dealt with. And so here we are in a period of five to six years building these projects, and hopefully one of them will last 10 years longer than the other as we move down the road. So future council, Ayanna may still be on it in 50 years, who knows? We'll have to decide how to move forward then. But thank you for being here in the presentation, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you for being here and all of the explanation of the report. And obviously, it's a glowing report. And you know, as I was looking, reading through it prior to the meeting, for me personally, I don't, I don't look too much at where we compare against the other localities. I'm worried about what Williamsburg does, and I think we're in a really good place. You answered one of my questions was what you thought that if it's 26 million or 30 million for, if we decided on a library project, what impact that may have? And you already touched on that and said you didn't think overall it would be a significant impact in our debt profile. And I agree, seeing something with that in the profile. And one of the things that you've presented in the past, either at our budget retreats or other projects that we were considering is what, how many, not necessarily a tax increase, but how many pennies equivalent to a, to a tax increase would it take to increase the revenue to make up that difference without, without actually raising taxes? So that's something I'd like to see. So, that's something I'd like to see. It's always been helpful for me. I know in the past, you know, we need five cent additional, equivalent to a five cent, five pennies revenue to support that project, and I'd like to see that for...
Yes, sir.
...for the consideration for the library as well.
Tyler's taking good notes, so I want you to know. It's just, I don't have the ability, capacity to remember all this, but no, we, but I, we figured this was exactly the type of thing you'd want, and you should expect that. But I do think it comes a little bit of, maybe a surprise to the community that you really are so well-positioned in the debt profile. But I think part of it is because, again, not all the debts are the same. Again, when I come back, if you'll have me, and we're planning to sometime in September or what have you with regard to the utilities, that's a different kind of debt service and debt than the general fund. So, again, that's the, the strength of the way the city is set up, that you have a bona fide self-supporting enterprise fund. Not all smaller cities or counties can say that, and they have to rely on the general fund. So, then, if they do, it really is general fund debt. So, for us, that will not be the case. So, that's, that's an important concept there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Hi, thank you so much. This is always, always great to have you here and to learn a lot of the details. And so, I do have a couple of questions, some of which have already been addressed and talked about, the library, but one, one is, in your expertise, is there something that, is there, is there a metric of anything that we discussed that's the thing that you're like, here, this, if there was an issue, this would be sort of the first canary in the coal mine? Is there, is, like, would it be debt to assess value? Like, what is it that would start to be like, hmm, I see like something coming down the tracks, and I'm starting to get, like, we need to, we need to make an adjustment? What would that be?
I would say it's your credit card. I would say the debt service to the revenues, absolutely. You know, it starts creeping up, that means, you know, it's, it's, it's starting to push out potentially or, you know, other things that you might want to do with that same dollar. So, that, for me, is sort of the number one thing, is really how big your credit card is. Are you doing that strategically, or is it really rising in a way that doesn't have a true governor to it, but it just keeps going up? So, that would be, that would be my answer to you.
And I think what you were just saying may help answer the question that I have in my head. And the way I think about it is, what you were just talking about is these different streams, right? So, we have the HTRFA, and you've got the borrowing for the sports complex over here, and we have the utility fund that is doing the borrowing for utility infrastructure changes over here. And then you have the general fund, which is what we're talking about right now, which is really, if we all boil it down, is talking about the police station, the fire station at some point, and then the library, Stryker Center, right? So, when we think about with the debt that we have and that we are looking at with respect to the general fund, we are talking about these generational buildings, fire station, police station, library.
Absolutely.
And so, what I think I just heard you say was that if you didn't really capture, if one couldn't really, you know, didn't really capture the fact that these are coming from different places, there may be a perception of like, oh, my gosh, like, this is, this is, like, the sky might be falling. But the perception, right, kind of comes from that lack of being able to sort of see the different streams, especially with respect to the fact that we do live in a, in a small community, and that, like you said earlier, can be a little bit of a disadvantage sometimes with respect to rating. So, my question that I originally was thinking about was like, gosh, like, this all looks really good. Like, it looks like, you know, things are going according to plan, and that there is a plan, and that the fact that we are in this moment where, you know, in the 70s, they were just, it was the boom times, apparently, when they were building the fire station, the police station, the library, and now we have these generational projects, that this all looks very, like, favorable. And so, in my head, I'm thinking, well, then, why the, why the perception of some that we are, we are really in dire financial, like, debt straits? But I think part of the answer is what you just said, and is there any other thing that you think sort of drives perception sometimes when, when looking at, at debt?
I, I think unfortunately, sometimes people get stuck in another era. I remember the city when it had no debt outstanding, okay? So, you know, maybe I'm the number one culprit, because here we are, we've got a bunch of debt, but I do remember that. And I remember the first borrowing we did, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was a $10 million borrowing. So, we did, and we looked back, and we said to ourselves, when we did 10 million, what was the overall health of the city back then? And it was a far cry from where it is today, interestingly enough. So, it's not just about the numbers, it's, it's about the ability to service those numbers. So, I go back earlier, I said to you, the rating agencies have a natural prejudice, if you would, for population. I mean, the thinking is, if you've got 100,000 citizens, there's 100,000 potential ways they can raise some dollars. If you have 15,000, that's a much smaller, you know, denominator. But when you start to look closely under the hood, what you realize is that this city, by nature of what it represents, which is sort of America's tourism hub, if you think about it, one of the great institutions, you know, the, you know, universities, if you think about it also, so there's really thousands of more people that are really part of paying for all of this than, let's say, a city that has 15,000 that's located, you know, off the interstate and has no discernible, you know, tourism and other things or universities. So, you have to look at that as well. You know, again, I, I don't know, like I said, perception, and I know Vice Mayor, and I understand your point about, you care about, but I think sometimes when you look at your neighbors and you compare to others, like the rating agencies do from the best practices, you can see you're, you're well-positioned. You can see that you've got real dollars that are there to buffer. So, from that perspective, the sky is definitely not falling. But I would also say that I've been involved with you on your recommendation for your unassigned fund balance, and it's purposely higher than that 25%. And the reason that we recommend that is for the very reason that, again, you have a tourism, you've got universities, you've got things that are more susceptible to, again, you know, good and bad economies and things like COVID, what have you. But I do think that that was factored in and thought about, and so, again, I don't want to be cavalier about saying 20, 26, oh, it's, it's not all the same. I get that. But when you get to your point, which was an excellent one, these, these debts, these four generational, I don't see a generational project one or two or three years behind that, that I know of. So, so we're really talking about digesting, and since we've already got the 20 million factored in, it's sort of like, you know, if you think of the, the four pillars, you're basically already been talking about funding that fourth pillar. Now, it's, okay, maybe that's, that pillar comes with a little bit of extra, you know, heft to it, but I do think it's, it's a doable thing, and we'll, we'll put those numbers together, and it's going to be up to you to decide. And it doesn't say also, let me say one more thing, it doesn't mean we will keep the AAA, because the AAA or even the AA+ is not just debt-driven, it's all other things, such as continuing to demonstrate a solid surplus, showing that you keep the unassigned fund balance very healthy. It shows that there's still a robust economy that they're looking to. So, those factors also, some of which you have no control over, some you don't, could also influence a AAA. So, it's possible that while the two rating agencies know that we're going to do 20 million, or at least that's been the plan from last year, we could still have our rating get knocked a notch, not because of debt, because they know about that, they've already factored that in, but it could be some other factors that could be a little weakening that we don't control. But nevertheless, I do think, I'm sorry to be so long-winded, but I do think for the citizens and those that have come before you, we are not being reckless by any means. We're, we're being thoughtful, and you've been thoughtful, and that's why I appreciate coming to your advances and talking about these things like we did, you know, months ago, so that we get lined up with these things and think about these often years in advance. So, with that, I don't know if anything, Andrew, I should add to that?
Mr. Rose, before we go, any questions standing?
Okay.
Just, just one question. When we talk about the utility revenue bonds...
Yes, ma'am.
Do they factor into the ratings, or are they completely in a separate lane?
So, that's a very good question. They do factor in, insofar as, since the enterprise fund, they expected to stay as a self-supporting enterprise fund, they will look at that and say, all right, for the general fund that they're rating, one less thing to worry about in the general fund is that we might be coming, we, the enterprise fund, might be coming to the general fund for help. They check that off going, it's not a problem. No, you're not going to do that.
So, it's a positive for us?
It is a positive, that's right.
And you commented about the ratings, particularly with Moody's, that they look at diversification of, of economy, so I would think having the sports and events center as a diversification would be a plus in our little chart as well.
Takes a while, but eventually, that's right. I mean, they look at the, you know, you could further bring in folks that otherwise heretofore wouldn't be here, and that's further helping to the, to the businesses and, you know, the lodging and tourism and all those things, the meals, it's, it's accretive, and it will happen.
And thinking of perception, to Stacy's point and the large numbers, I think for those of us who have been around a little longer and remember what our first mortgage was compared to what the numbers are now to buy a house, you really say, wow, you know, that number is so big, so, so I get that. And I guess like a mortgage, the main thing is, it's important to know what our ability is to pay and not to, not to exceed that when we're looking at 20 million versus 26 million or 28 million.
Yeah, and so, part of also, as I, as I was saying a moment ago, it's not just 20 that might go to 26, it's what's beyond that. And so, if I am understanding your overall capital program, I don't see a big project behind that that needs the general fund true dollars only. I don't necessarily see that. So, that's helpful as well in some of my thinking when I, when I mentioned this earlier. So, yes, but hopefully, we will be back, and even, I want to say this too for everyone, the utility size of about 27, 28 million, and maybe that moves up a little bit, relative to your enterprise system and your age of the city, of course, that's pretty modest. It's not, it's not actually a very big number. Again, I don't want to be cavalier again, but it's, it's a very doable number, and I know we talked about that a couple of months ago, or even more than a couple, but several months ago. So, again, I want to make that clear to, to the citizens. And when we do that, we're also going to recommend, which we have worked with staff on, that we have certain policies, just like here, you've got unassigned fund balance, there we call it days' cash on hand. It's a little different way of looking at fund balances, but it's, again, it's germane to a utility enterprise fund, and that will also be done with your blessing, so that we keep that in a way that if there's a downturn, we're, we're going to be maximally able to address a downturn. May not be enjoyable, but it'll be, it won't be, hopefully, devastating if we weren't having reserves. So, we'll be talking about that with your blessing and, and all, not too long from now.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams, anything?
Yes, Ms. Williams.
All my questions have already been addressed. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And so, just to follow up on, on debt, and, you know, while they may be in different funds, utility fund, general fund, you know, the historic triangle, tourism tax funds, they're all being paid for by us. And so, there, there is an amount of debt there, and so, I, I, when I look at debt, even in my own world, how does it benefit my business? And so, when I look at these debts, is how does it benefit the citizenry? And so, while it may be peaking now to the point that's been made, you know, I don't see big projects coming forward. Now, will we have to, we'll be considering the potential of using debt to pay for fire trucks, but that's $3 million. So, I think moving forward as, as debt starts to teeter off, our position will be, our financial position will be that much better in the future until 2070, when council has to figure out what they're going to do with the library. Thank you, Mr. Rose. If there's no other questions, I appreciate you being here, and look forward to seeing you soon with some more information.
Appreciate it. Thank you much.
Okay. Takes us now to council communications, and I do have two this Friday, last past Friday, I attended the Youth Summer Achievement Program, which is something that our Health and Human Services Department puts on, Wendy Evans's department, and I always have fun at this event, and it's a program where young kids from 11 to 15 in the city get to participate in a camp sponsored by the city, and they do all sorts of fun activities, but at the final presentation, they usually put on little skits, and it's really enjoyable. So, I'm glad that that program's been going on now for 31 years. It's good to see that we're helping our, our children understand, and there's three principles, pillars of the, of the conversation there, the camp, is role modeling, responsibility, and respect. And so, I think they, they all really enjoyed it, so it's a good program. And then also, last week, had the opportunity to, Congressman Whitman was here to tour our water treatment plant, and Jack and the staff did a great job showing what is a great facility. The congressman is, we applied for a grant, and he's put it forward through House Appropriations, and so hopefully, we can get a few hundred thousand, I think it's 249,000 for some security upgrades and stuff. Vice Mayor, anything? Okay. With that, I believe we have closed session. Oh, open forum. Sorry about that. We have open forum on, on the agenda. Would anybody like to come forward and address council? Got a lot of information today. Seeing none, I'll close the open forum. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for keeping me in line. Do we have closed session?
We do.
Okay.
I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of Dakota, Virginia, for the purpose of discussing two personnel matters per Subparagraph 1 concerning evaluations of the city manager and city attorney, one personnel matter per Subparagraph 1 concerning appointments to boards and commissions, two property matters per Subparagraph 3 regarding the disposition of surplus property, of which discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and one property matter per Subparagraph 3 regarding the acquisition of economic development property, of which discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Second.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kerns here?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll go into closed session, and we'll return in open session to conclude
Session.
I move to approve the certification of a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2.7.
Okay?
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Aye.
There's no other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Dusty.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Aye.